Good evening. Welcome to the February 15th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call roll, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, excuse me, the invocation, the invocation. And we do have Pastor Van Ibs Ibasan from Oceanside Mariners Church who is here. I did see, there you are, yes, who just had a ribbon cutting not too long ago, the place where the new venture used to be, and now we have a new congregation there.
Yeah.
And it's called Mariners Church. Pastor Van?
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Will you join me for the invocation? My God, we thank you for the gift of today. We thank you for our beautiful country and the freedoms and the privileges that we have. We pray this evening for our mayor, our city council members that gather here tonight, those who have been chosen to shoulder an incredible responsibility of serving and watching over our beautiful city, Oceanside. Grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and issues facing our city. May you grant them wisdom to know, may you grant them wisdom to discern the right thing to do and the courage to accomplish the task. Give them the hunger and thirst to do what is right and just, and the unity and harmony even when there are honest disagreements. Bless our city by blessing our leaders, we pray in your beautiful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Van. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right, this is part of the meeting, at the very beginning of the meeting, where we get to talk about things that are happening that are so critical in our city of Oceanside and/or what this month signifies for us. And this is February, this is Black History Month, and very, very important to us. So I would like to ask Bee Palmer to come forward. We have a few people that we are honoring, leaders in our, in our community, our African-American community, who every day, come on in, come on over, every day have, do something very special for our community. They are people who are rarely thanked or congratulated for the much, for the very important work that they do. And so I'm just so excited about this. This is in conjunction with the North Sandia County NAACP. So thank you so much Bee for helping with this. We've got-
And we have our vice president here.
And we have our vice president here. Danielle Escobar.
Say it again.
Danielle Escobar.
Yes.
And Bee is the chairperson for the women in NAACP, North Sandia County. So we have 15 honorees, 15. Could you guys come down? Come on. Let's, we're going to ask that you all come down because we have a certificate for you. We want to be able to, we, oh, Mrs. Parker, wow. Ms. Parks, excuse me, Ms. Parks.
That's the first one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. Founding member for the prayer breakfast, right?
In our chapter.
In our chapter.
So she's got the first one.
Oh. Our first one is Ms. June Parks. She is the founding member of the North County Chapter of NAACP. On behalf of the city of Oceanside and in partnership with North Sandia County NAACP, we honor you, Ms. Parks, for your unwavering commitment to our community, always leading with love and service. You are a phenomenal community champion for ensuring that every year, Oceanside and its neighboring communities come together to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Black history through the annual Community Prayer Breakfast now hosted by the North Sandia County NAACP. Thank you so much for your service. Ms. Parker, would you like to say a few words?
No.
Okay. Woo! Javon. We honor you, Javon, for your dedication and providing support to the North Sandia County NAACP, for your creative contributions and technical support with information technology and media support for other community organizations, for your generous spirit in working with seasoned members in the community with technology without hesitation. Never hesitate, huh? No. And for your commitment to bridging our Black and Brown youth, to STEM arts and theater work for Black and Brown. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words? Okay.
We have Linda Simkins Berry.
Linda. How you doing, Linda?
I'm doing fine.
I feel like I'm standing with greatness here, you know? It rubs on, rubs off, yeah. We honor you, Linda, for your phenomenal leadership as president of the North County African-American Women's Association. You lead the membership program for women and youth to raise awareness of women empowerment and access to college and upward mobility. In your role as Director of Career Services at UEI College in Oceanside, you are committed to providing good-paying jobs, employment opportunities to our youth and communities of color, including co-sponsoring the Rising Star Scholarship Program for our graduating seniors.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I will, I will say a few words. It's the community that helps our organization be what it is. I want to say thank you to everyone in here, all of our supporters, and all of my mentors. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
We have Mr. Mark Henry.
Mark, yo, Mark. Well, Mark, it's, it's been a pleasure working with you. We honor you as a longtime Ose Side resident and Oceanside High School graduate, class of '90. You successfully founded Star Youth After School Program at Lincoln Middle School, empowering youth to recognize their own greatness. In addition, you continue to elevate the voices of our community through your podcast, Activate Today. You are such a phenomenal mentor for our youth, Mark. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank God, thank God. I like it, thank God, that's it.
One of my favorites. Pastor Morris Woods.
Pastor Woods. Always present, always. We honor you Pastor Wood, Woods, for your shepherd's heart. By providing food to the community every week and health information that may not otherwise have been received, we acknowledge your leadership and heartfelt contributions to our community. Wherever there is a need, you are there without hesitation. Thank you Pastor Woods.
The mayor tried to hold the mic because you don't give it to a pastor, amen. I do want to say, I really appreciate, you know, the recognition, and I accept this really on behalf of my church, because we have a whole team, amen, that works and make things happen for the community. So thank you very much on behalf of Friendly Church of God in Christ.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next recipient is Rachel White.
Rachel. Well, Rachel, you have to know that you blew us away when you did your interview for Planning Commission, so it's like, well, where can we put her? And you went straight to the Housing Commission. Thank you so much for that. And so we have here a Certificate of Excellence honoring you. We honor you, Rachel, for your commitment to advocating for those experiencing housing insecurity and for serving as Housing Commissioner, elevating the needs of the underemployed, unsheltered, and food insecure. Thank you so much, Rachel. Did you want to say something?
I just want to say, let's always remember our neighbors. We're all just one paycheck or less away from being on the streets. And so let's show kindness and mercy to those who age out of foster care, who are elderly and doesn't, and don't have enough money saved in their retirement to enjoy their final years. We all want peace of mind, and it starts with housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Our next very worthy recipient is Ms. Rayklin Denning.
Ray. Okay, I have to say, someone that's a little shorter than me, but much mightier, much mightier, you can't tell. So Ray, it is such an honor and pleasure to honor you this evening for your dedication to educational leadership, civic engagement, and creating upward mobility opportunities for all, especially for the disproportionately impacted families in Oceanside, and for inspiring women to find their own greatness and voice. Thank you.
I just want to say that my experience here in Oceanside has been tremendous, and I want you to know that Miracosta College is your college, is in your area. Please attend Miracosta College. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a plug. That's a plug.
And the last recipient with my hands is Rob Howard.
Last but not least. Say, Rob. So this is a Certificate of Excellence, and we honor you, Rob, for your dedication to human rights, social justice, youth empowerment, civic engagement, and advocacy for economic development and upward mobility for the unsheltered, the underemployed, and middle class. Thank you so much for serving on the Police and Fire Commission during a very difficult time in our city's police community relations. Your leadership is so critical. Thank you, Rob. Thank you so much. Thank you.
First of all, thank you. I just want us to keep in mind, in our community, there's a lot of things going on. There are a lot of people who are lost, and they're not always the poor ones that are lost. So let's keep in mind that we should take time, care about people, and really, really understand that it is the least of them. Matthew 25, start at the 31st verse and finish that chapter, and you will understand what our work should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
And speaking of Miracosta College, our next recipient is Dr. Wendy Stewart-Williams.
And Dr. Williams' husband and son are here to accept this award. We honor you, Dr. Stewart-Williams, for your phenomenal leadership. You have served as an advocate for equal education and college access and co-created the first Black Alliance Organization at Miracosta College. You are named, you were named the first woman, Black woman Associate Vice President, interim Chief of Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accessibility. You are a philanthropist and supporter of families and single women experiencing homelessness through Operation Hope, North County. Thank you so much to her family, because I know this is a family affair. Did you want to say something?
As Mrs. V said, my mother is in Chicago, and we'd like to accept this award on her behalf.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next recipient is Mr. Gregory Richardson.
All right, all right. A really, 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 really intelligent person here that I'm standing next to. Let's see if I can, some of it can rub off. We honor you, Gregory, for being a voice for our Black and queer trans youth in Oceanside for the last few years. You have represented the North County LGBTQ Resource Centers Board in a youth advisory capacity and have served and represented the young trans voice during the BLM protest. You express your love for social justice through your wonderful artistic talent. Thank you for what you do.
First one to do that? Yeah, I would just like to say, of course, thank you to the North County LGBTQ Resource Center for giving me a platform and for being advocates for this community, and so grateful to all my teachers and mentors in Oceanside as well as Miracosta College, and just grateful to be able to serve, so thank you.
Thank you, Gregory.
Mrs. Gwen Sanders.
Gwen, oh, wow, you just stepped on over. Well, Gwen, I am, I'm very, very honored to be the one to give you this Certificate of Excellence. We honor you for your unwavering, longstanding commitment to Black history, civil rights, and social justice. Your long service on our citizens' boards and commissions, especially on the Police and Fire Commission, was exemplary. We thank you for all your skills, efforts, and talents that have made our community a better place. Thank you, Gwen.
I would like to say just a few words, but most of you that know me probably don't think I only have a few that I can say. However, I would like to say this, thanks to the NAACP and Honorable Mayor for recognizing us for Black History Month, I'm glad that they could see a value in the things that I tried to contribute over the last 40 years for my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen.
Another Miracostaite, JD Banks.
Present! Hi JD! JD, we honor you for your contributions to STEM and the arts among the Black and Brown community. As founder and creator of the Black Bear Cat Press and the Black Nerds Expo, culturally-centered arts culture and STEM event, you provide space, visibility, and access for creative expression for the Black community. Thank you so much, JD.
Thank you for recognizing. This is a shameless plug for the Black Nerds Expo coming up on Saturday, February 25th, from 11:00 to 4:00 at Miracosta College. It's free, you guys, there's a lot of stuff to do, and there's also online portion if you can attend in person. So I hope you can see it, blacknerdsexpo.com if you really want to know what's going on.
And yeah, you know, nerds are in, right? Nerds are in.
Next up, we have Dr. Richard Lawrence.
Dr. Lawrence! Wow, you've got, you've got several people here for you. Dr. Lawrence, we honor you for your extraordinary leadership in education and your commitment for making Oceanside a better place for all our students. Your dedication in affirming Black history throughout the OUSD experience and centering the voices of the community through the Ethnic Studies Community Advisor Group is empowering. Thank you so much for all you do.
I am humbled and honored to receive this award. Thank you, North County NAACP, Mayor Sanchez, and the Oceanside Unified School District's Board and leaders for entrusting me with this position to lead, and this award just tells me the work is not done. We have more to come and more achievements to be made. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Angela Jackson.
Angela! Angela, we honor you as an out-queer Black woman and trailblazer leader who leads the North County Conversation around Stop the Hate Program and organize, organize the North County LGBTQ Resource Centers panel discussion with diverse representatives from the BIPOC communities. The past few years, you have committed to making the annual Pride by the Beach more inclusive and engaging with our local queer BIPOC community. Thank you for everything that you do and for standing up for so many that need your voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, and thank you, North County LGBTQ Resource Center, Max and Lisa, for giving me the opportunity and putting their trust in me. So again, it's kind of interesting and humbling to have these achievements kind of mirrored back to, mirrored back to me and, and just know that that's, that I have become the person five-year-old Angela needed to, to be, so thank you all.
Congratulations, Angela.
And last but certainly not least, personal favorites for me, Cynthia and WB May.
Cynthia, where's WB?
Right here.
Come on down, WB! Wow, you, you know, you created something here in Oceanside. You're all over. We honor you for your phenomenal art and business, Cynthia's Artistic Expressions.
Amen.
Amen, yes. Together, you support and promote arts for healing, expression, and mental health, and advocate for health and wellness among the Black community. I know that during the pandemic, you paid the rent, and then you still were told, you know what, rent's going to be doubled afterwards. But you know what, you, you went out there, you continued, and I am so proud of you two for having this, this, this business that brings so much joy to so many people here in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you so very much to the city, to the NAACP. I appreciate everything and everybody that's here that has supported us. We pretty much have seen almost everybody come through those doors, one way or the other. We've had two locations since we've been here. We had the very first African-American Black History Month Art Exhibition in Oceanside back in 2017, and we are now in Los Angeles. Actually, we drove down from LA because we're in a Black History Month Art Exhibition up there as well, and the work is definitely being done. And what we do also in the veteran community, in the active-duty community with PTSD and depression and anxiety, and helping them to get through that with art, and we do that ourselves, and we just want to share that with the world.
Thank you, thank you. And could we get closer so that we can take a picture? Let's, let's get closer so we can take a picture.
Yeah, the smaller ones on the front. There you go.
Is everybody in there? Yeah, there you go.
Got it. Thank you so much. I know this wasn't very long, but thank you so much.
Thank you, man. We thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Rachel, thank you so much.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to continue with the agenda. All right, next, we have the closed session report, item number three, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss item one on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Firefighters Association and the Oceanside Fire Management Association. There was no meeting on item two. With respect to item one, there's no action to report under the Brown Act.
Thank you. All right, we're on our consent calendar items. Those are items four through 12. Are there any requests from the public to pull or speak?
We have two requests from the public to pull. One request to pull item number 10.
10.
And another request to pull item number 11.
Need approval balance.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the balance. Please vote. Thank you. Item number 10 is acceptance of $142,523 in grant funds from the state of California for the Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant Program. You have one person request to speak?
Sandra Martinez.
Ms. Martinez?
I don't see her.
Are you here?
I don't see her.
Ms. Martinez, are you here?
Is she in the lobby? Sandra Martinez?
Doesn't look like she's here, so there's a motion to approve.
Oh wait, there she is.
Is Sandra Martinez here? Going once, going twice?
Ms. Martinez, you're up. Item number, item number 10.
Almost.
What am I speaking of?
Item number 10.
Thank you. Sorry, y'all. You guys are so fast. Is the overhead thing working?
Should be.
Okay. Thanks for giving me a second to get organized here. I'm Sandra Martinez, and I want to talk about item 10. Just one little thing on it that has me concerned, and that's the $45,000 for the meal program.
And my concern- This is actually acceptance of $142,523 in grant funds from the state of California for the Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant Program. It's for police officers.
Right. Part of that is a $45,000 for the meal program.
Okay.
Okay. And my concern isn't about a meal program or about the money, but my concern is that there is a meal program. This meal program is being implemented by the Santa Ana College Wellness Program. It's a Paleo Zone program, and Paleo diets do have pros and cons. I know they're kind of the latest, greatest thing. They're not all that great, and they're not all that wonderful, so that's something that needs to be considered. But the real thing I wanted to address was that most of our institutions are really just money funnels for corporations, and that is what has happened. If you look at, since the CDC took over dietary guidelines, which is what this graph is, you can see that in 1980, we came out with new dietary guidelines, and it increased overweight and obesity incidence tremendously ever since that was institutionalized in our schools and other places. So what happened a couple years ago was University of Tufts, Tufts University, one of the Ivy League schools, was funded by NIH as well as General Mills, Kellogg's, et cetera, and they've come up with the new Food Pyramid Scheme. And it's called the Food Compass, and this is the new, latest, greatest food concept. What they've done is they've rated foods based on nutritional value- What they've done is they've rated foods based on nutritional values, but they've also rated them on their ESG scores of the companies that are being paid, that are paying for the funding. So you can kind of understand how they come up with some of these strange things. For example, Lucky Charms is healthier than steaks. Now, if anyone actually believes that, you really do need a course in nutrition because Lucky Charms is not all that healthy. But this is an example of what happens when our institutions are funded by corporations. And here's another one, really hard to see, it's small print, but you can, you can see frosted mini wheats are healthier than ground beef. Frosted mini wheats are 87, I think, actually, 87% good for you, 87% nutrition, ground beef only 26. Eggs are very low. So this is my concern with this program is the Paleo diet that's going to be instituted on our officers is really not going to be very beneficial for them because of the collusion between them and the corporations.
Thank you very much. Did, did you?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve and a second. No other comments, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 11 is adoption of a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for shoreline erosion control grant to the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Boating and Waterways, and authorization for the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to negotiate and execute all agreements and amendments necessary to comply with the Division of Boating and Waterways grant requirements. We have Jason Malik.
Yeah, Jason Malik here? Yeah. Please make your way to the podium.
Sure. My.
Yeah, you got to speak, speak in the mic so that it can be on the record.
Yeah, we have people on Zoom, and we do have audience members with assisted listening devices, so we need you on mic.
Thank you. Thank you all for, the audience and for your service. My concern may be tangential and not quite pertinent, but I'm concerned with the sand in general on our beaches in Oceanside and just the maintenance of, of our beach, our beach frontage essentially. And I just want to make sure that the council is aware that there's been a lot of, obviously erosion and problems that are essentially steering the majority of, of people and use of the beach towards certain areas, like the pier and the harbor areas. And there's, you know, there's been other proposals that have looked toward the benefit of, for example, the Rivetman Project, 19 or so homes that are going to seriously benefit from a proposal that may take away beach access by creating a additional seawall for our beaches. And I just want to make sure that the council, with, with whatever, if this, the grant for sand is approved, that, that you really do take into consideration that there are hundreds of thousands of people that should have access to the entire coast of Oceanside and not just to certain select areas, and that, that that be considered for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a motion and a second. I do have a question for staff. Why is this application being done now before we even know what the project is going to
Hello, Council and Mayor. Great question. My name is Jamie Timberlake. I'm the Coastal Zone Administrator for the city. And your question was, why is this being applied for now? This, this grant requires us to apply very early. The grant is authorized for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and this grant will be awarded for portions of our project that we, like you said, don't know exactly what we're going to be doing for Phase Two yet, but it does, it will be funding the environmental compliance portion of the project and the final design and engineering of whatever that design may be.
Thank you very much. For that reason, I can't support it. I would really like to vote on something that I already know that we have. So there's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. General items. Item number 13 is adoption of a resolution to reestablish the Community Relations Commission and approve, approval of its bylaws. And this is a report by, not by Leilani, but Maria Yanez. My apologies. Substitution.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Maria Yanez, and I am a Housing Program Manager with the Housing and Neighborhood Services Department, and I'm here tonight to present to you on the Community Relations We are here tonight to ask City Council to adopt a resolution to reestablish the Community Relations Commission and approve its bylaws. The Community Relations Commission was created and approved by City Council in 1991. The Community Relations Commission was created to support the city's vision to create a safe and culturally diverse community and the city's mission to enhance the quality of life through service to its diverse communities. The commission worked to promote understanding and harmony among all people of the city and enhance community relations through community education and celebrations. The Community Relations Commission supported several cultural events, activities, as well as hosted and sponsored a number of activities to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Those activities included the establishment of the MLK Scholarship Program. To date, the MLK Scholarship Program has provided over $1 million in scholarships to 389 students that are Oceanside residents. In 2000, in 2022, over 100,000 alone was awarded in scholarships to 17 of those students, all of which are currently attending two- and four-year institutions. It also, sorry, lost my place. The dedication and establishment of a Martin Luther King Jr. Library Book Collection was done in the library. Dedication and naming of the Martin Luther King Jr. Park and the naming of a community room in our Civic Center complex. There's also the establishment of the MLK Community Service Award to promote the spirit of volunteerism among Oceanside residents. Pictures of past recipients of that award are located in the community Martin Luther King Room. City staff, city staff met with Oceanside residents, community members, and key stakeholders to draft the new Community Relations Commission vision, mission, and bylaws. The vision of the CRC, or Community Relations Commission, is to support a healthy community, strong and secure neighborhoods, and a connected community. The mission of the CRC is to promote understanding, welcome, and embrace the community's diversity, and safeguard equal opportunity and access to programs, activities, and services and decision-making processes for everyone, as well as addressing the issue of inequities, discrimination, and barriers to, to opportunity. There are six main areas of service identified for the Community Relations Commission, the first being to identify and bring forth education, awareness, opportunities, assist in development of collaborative and healthy relationships, address accessibility and availability of services for all, facilitate transparent communication and discussions, serve as a liaison for community building, and assist in establishing an equitable culture and The structure for the Community Relations Commission will include nine voting members. It will ensure it is, it is, there is diversity and representation, and it is representative of the demographics, diversity, and culture of the city, and particularly those underrepresented and low-resourced neighborhoods. Housing and Neighborhood Services Department will serve as the sponsor of the Community Relations Commission and coordinate with other departments as lead, as lead to future work programs as needed. Staff will bring forth an annual work plan to the City Council for review and approval. City staff will also prepare an annual written report to the city manager and city council on the commission's activities and summary of recommendation. There's also a commitment from the Community Relations Commission that it will demonstrate the city's commitment to fostering better community relations. All programs and activities will be supported through the Housing and Neighborhood Services Department. City staff will be addressed as part of the annual budget process. In addition, this resolution and bylaws were presented to the Housing Commission on January 24th, 2023, at which time the Housing Commission recommended the city's council adoption of the resolution and bylaws. As stated before, we are here tonight to ask City Council to adopt a resolution to reestablish the Community Relations Commission and approve its bylaws. That is the end of my presentation. Both my director, Leilani Hines, and I are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. How many people wish to speak on this?
We have three speakers on this item.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Rachel White, to be followed by Rob Howard, to be followed by Max Disposti.
Come on down.
Come on down, Rachel.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Mayor, and City Councilmembers and residents of Oceanside, my community and my family. I sit on the Oceanside Housing Commission, and when we reviewed this last month, we had some questions, and we definitely wanted some things spoken to. We do not want the Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship taken away from the Housing Commission at this time. We believe that within a couple of years, once the community relations is up and running and has its feet under them, and they can partner with us to see how it should be run and to see how we facilitate it, that the passing of the baton could be done at that time. There is a concern that if it's taken away from the Housing Commission, it's going to lose its stability, and it's going to become, it's a very large project, and we don't want it to overwhelm a new commission that doesn't have the history of running it, as well as those who have done so very excellently on the Housing Commission. So we would like, I would like to ask that if you choose to adopt this, please do so with the line item that the Martin Luther King Jr. Scholarship and prayer breakfast be kept under the Housing Commission and under the chairs of the commission.
At this time.
At this time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. I'm, first of all, I fully support it, excited about it. I just wanted to have a couple of comments in a different area. In recognition of this commission, we oftentimes think it's just a feel-good, but I would ask that we do more than just think about it as a feel-good, and that that commission really takes some time to look at what the city is doing with regard to how we are interconnected as a community. Thinking about from the economic development piece, it would be great to see us take the culture that we have in this city and actually set it up to where we are actually celebrating that, but do it from a city perspective. We've built a whole lot of hotels, and so it'd really be nice to give peoples, the people in, in our region or across the country, a chance to come here and celebrate, because if you take all of the different groups, we literally could have a celebration every month of the year. The other piece is, I would just ask that we, as we're looking at who to put on there, as a service-connected disabled veteran, I really would hope that we do not forget that our veteran community is key. A lot of our city, community leaders are from the veteran community, and that they be supported throughout this process, and again, fully support this commission, excited about it, and looking forward to the progress that we can make in the city as we continue. It's not San Diego. We all know Oceanside is America's finest city. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Disposti.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. I just, I hope I can hold my excitement, because I was a commissioner 12 years ago when that CRC was dismantled for different reasons. That was related to budget at the time. But I just want to give the background. I mean, we worked really for 12 years to make sure that our diverse voices in the community will be represented, and I'm so proud to say that in these 12 years, we met everywhere. We met at the beach, we met in the ruins here in Oceanside. We met everywhere, because this community tribes, from the Samoan community was instrumental for this work, the Black community, the NWCP in particular, the Latinx community, our queer community, Native community, Filipino community, we met and became, became one in Oceanside. And I just want to look around the room and also what we just honor just a few minutes ago. We are excited in a celebratory way to give voices back to these communities that have been alienated and marginalized even further because this commission wasn't there. So I agree with Rachel about her comments, but I think we can look into it as we go to, but the excitement of finally feeling, feeling the community back where it belongs, our diverse community that, which we are proud of, I think is just an element I would not give for granted in this conversation, because like Rob Howard said, we're not San Diego, we're not even Carlsbad. It's Oceanside, and we honor and celebrate our diversity. This is a very powerful moment, so thank you all for making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers to the council. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm definitely going to support this. I was, also served on the previous commission for about a year and a half or so until I had to get off due-to-work constraints, but, and I don't know if it's appropriate, and I'm sure the city attorney will stop me if I, what I'm about to say is wrong, but being that there would be a council member liaison to the commission, I would definitely put my name forward to help get this commission up and going and review so we can get our members for the commission picked, if that would be appropriate or not, but.
Yeah, I was thinking we could bring that forward at a later time.
That's fine. I just want to let you know I'm more than happy to help with this.
And there will be, there will, you will have to make nominations, of course, for the nine members, so it could be taken up then.
And the application process would begin tomorrow. For what, 45 day, how long? I think we would follow.
Two, 30, to 45 days.
Okay. Councilmember Joyce.
That's all right. I'm also excited. Thank you for everyone who, from the community, has been asking to bring this, this commission back. I think it's really important that we create a space where these conversations that have taken place all over the city, as the director said, can take place in the place where they really belong, which is right here in our chambers. So in the city's hall, I think it's the right place for us to have challenging conversations and move forward policies that are really directed at making sure that each and every part of our city that is essential, not only to its history but to its future, has a place in the growing, in the growing city that we have. So just a couple of questions I had. One, is that, is there, because we're looking at services across the city, I know that's part of the, the goal of the commission itself, is there a reason that it's under housing or is it because it was under housing before? Or does it always have to have a department that kind of sponsors it? I guess I'm just technically asking about that.
So I think the history is, it has been in the Housing and Neighborhood Services. I think, and we are also advocating to continue to be within our department. Our department has historically worked with our more economically or disadvantaged communities. Our mission in our department is always to serve our lower and moderate-income areas that tend to be disproportionately ones that are diverse. We also house our community resource centers in which we provide a number of benefits and activities related to those areas and to the disadvantaged communities, and hence why we would recommend that it stay within. This department, we have seen across the board, when you look at different commissions, they can historically be in maybe an HR, Human Resources Department, or other departments, and the work that would be done would be cross-departmental as well. It wouldn't be just in our department.
I believe the bylaw says that it's up to the city manager. Is that correct? So city manager, if there is an issue, you could assign someone that if there's an issue specific to a certain department, you could have that person there?
Yeah, absolutely. The city manager's office will be very much involved in launching this to make sure that the commission is successful in terms of its goals, and we did have some conversations early on with Leilani staff. early on with Leilani's staff to make sure that we had the capacity to successfully staff the commission. I think that that's the case.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, as far as concerns go, that's just the special attention of our staff, because getting it off the ground and making sure that it's functional and that we're not limiting the scope of the conversation is really important. The other question I had was to the council. I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I would like to add one thing to the bylaws. I'd like to add that we provide Spanish translation at all meetings, live Spanish translation, and I'm asking this because we have a significant portion of our city that requires that kind of translation. If we're looking to make this committee, this commission culturally relevant and culturally responsive, then I think it's really important that we include that in the bylaws. So I guess I'm asking my councilmembers for support in that motion.
No other speakers? So that's a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that motion. This has been a long time coming, and I know that there was a time that we had to cut -- we cut 100 employees, and we had 26 commissions, and they got cut to half. Included with those cuts included a senior commission, which is very, very active, youth commission, Integrated Waste Commission, which was now called, probably would be called, the Zero Waste Commission. A lot of things that helped, the public helped the council with a lot of these issues. I'm very, very supportive of this, and thank you very much, staff, and all those that support this. Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Joyce's motion. The part about the Spanish translation, I would be okay with that, but I don't see where that would necessarily be only for one commission. I could see the bleed over, and I think before we take that big step, maybe we could look at that separately to see what the resources are, how we go about it, is it the feasibility? Let's get the commission formed and do all that, and then we can look at modifying those things later, because if you're going to do it just for this commission, why not for Harbor Beaches and Advisory? I don't know.
Well, I would say for this commission, it is specifically culturally relevant. I do -- if we have the need for all the commissions, that's a great idea. So you are suggesting that we give direction for staff to bring back information about providing live Spanish translation?
Yeah, unless staff can speak to it now, that it's not problematic, I just would hate to put something on them without a chance for them to have some discussion or the ways and means for doing that.
Mr. Borrego?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, yes, I would suggest that it be part of a larger conversation to take a look at all boards and commissions if we were going to do it for one.
So assuming that we have enough consensus to do that, I will amend my motion to make this, so make sure we get it passed today.
All right, and I'll second the new motion. And I did want to reference the comments from the Housing Commission that the first year at least, or when they're ready to go ahead and take over, those two really big events. So I think that's a good idea. And then the transition. So this year has already started, and is that all right? Yeah, okay. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I forgot to mention that during consent calendar items, we just want to make sure it's on the record that item number eight, which was the Public Works Agreement and Purchase Order for the restoration and replacement of the City Operations Center Building A roof, was pulled from the agenda prior to the meeting.
My apologies, I didn't get that memo, or I must have missed that memo. So item number eight was pulled, was not included with the items that were approved. Okay, let's see if we can do item number 14, which is authorization of the payment of 1. -- sorry? Oh, $1.5 million to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as the city's first installment of the matching funds for the next phase of the San Luis Rey flood protection project, and appropriation of funds from the assigned SLRR account. Mr. Bahaduri? Mr. Bahaduri is the Public Works Director.
Good evening, the Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Hamid Bahaduri, Public Works Director. We are here tonight in front of you as a new step along many, many steps that we have taken over the last 53 years. Make sure this thing works. Let's see if it worked. We are recommending that you authorize the payment of $1,479,078 to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as the first installment of our contributions for the new phase of the project. This project is over 53 years old. Back in 1970, the United States Congress approved the project to provide flood protection for the San Luis Rey River basin in general for a 250-year flood, and designing a channel that has a conveyance capacity of 89,000 cubic feet per second. It took about a decade to enter into an agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. In May 1988, we entered into an agreement, the city entered into an agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that obligated the city to pay 25% of the total cost of the project. And the project, and that time, based on the calculations of those days and the future expenditures, the city's share was about $28.5 million. The city contributions could have been made in three different ways. Real estate, right away, that we would offer for the project, for mitigation sites, cash and consulting services. About $8,250,000 of our contributions were made with cash and consulting services. About $20,250,000 are in real estate, which about $18,000, 18.4 is already made, about $2 million we're still negotiating with them over the ring con site. The project was finished in year 2000. However, at that time, a determination was made that things have changed, and there are new environmental concerns in the riverbed, and the project cannot be deemed complete and turned over to the city. Mostly like identification of new habitat area, new endangered species, and so the Army Corps did not consider the project complete. It was not turned over to the city. Instead, the Army Corps of Engineers engaged in what they call the post-authorization decision document, and it took them until July 2007. And in July 2007, that document identified significant changes in the environmental conditions that need to be reevaluated, and the project could not be considered complete. Following the 2000 post-authorization decision document, the Corps of Engineers started what we call a project reevaluation study, not only in light of the environmental issues that were identified in the pad, but because of Hurricane Katrina, some design standards for flood protection channels and levees had changed, so they had to reevaluate the design of this project. It took about 13 years, and finally, in 2020, there is a post-authorization change report that is completed by the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Army Corps used that PACR and took it to the Congress, and Congress in 2020 approved raising the cost ceiling authorization for this project from about $114 million to $202 million. That in turn obviously raised our share contribution, our 25%. It's going to go up from about $28.5 million now to $50.5 million. So as I mentioned before, you know, we, our obligations until now was $28.7 million. We have paid most of it. There's only like a $1.9 to $2.1 million that we're still discussing with them about their ring con medications site in Bonzal area. But for all practical purposes, we have paid our obligations for this phase. The new phase will require us to pay an additional $22 million. The Congress has already appropriated $5.2 million for the project, and that money has been also, I believe, has been released by O M B, and the Army Corps has it. However, the condition of the federal funds are that the local funds must be received by the federal agency before they can access the funds that the Congress has given them. So the Army Corps of Engineers needs to receive our $1.479 million in order to be able to proceed with the projects that they want to do. They already have about $4 million on balance available from the previous phase. Excuse me. So with the, with our money and $5.2 million and $4 million, they're going to have about $10.7 million. This point, $10.7 million is primarily used to complete new hydrology hydraulic evaluations for the channel, to make sure that the channel can be designed to carry at least 71,200 cubic feet per seven, per second, which is for a 100-year flood versus the 250-year flood that was supposed to be designed back in the 70s. Then they will also do additional geotechnical investigations, which are taking core samples from the riverbed and from the levees, and there are going to be a few dozens of those that they will probably do late September or October of this year. And then they will also do additional environmental assessment. So these three projects are what we think they're going to fund with $10.7 million. My guess is that they will still have some money left over, and they may even have some money for the design phase, or at least design. This is the schedule that the Army Corps of Engineers has given us. This is based on their projections on how fast they think they can progress on the project, and how the Congress will appropriate money, because the Congress has already authorized $202 million, but every year, if they want to get money, they have to go through the appropriations process. So this table that you see is their projection, their best estimate at this time, and this will total about $22 million that we have to pay over the next seven, eight years. As I mentioned, it is based on an assumption that the Congress will do appropriations as shown in that schedule, and more importantly, if the, that the Army Corps and their consultants can burn that kind of funds, they can do that much work. That's why we are guessing that probably, once we pay them the $1.479 million, we will not need to pay them for maybe another two federal fiscal years, hopefully. Currently, we have about $6.5 million in an account reserved for the San Luis Rey River project. If we pay about five and a half, if we pay $1.5 million roughly, if you decide to do so tonight, that will leave about $5 million in that account. And our obligations will be left $20,300,000, and that will mean that in the next decade or so, we need to set aside money or find new money in the tune of about $15.2 million to pay to the federal government for our share of the river. And we are going to work with our lobbyists, and we are going to look at all the grant opportunities possible, federal and state, and we will also look at the possibilities of using some of our own internal funds. So with that, our recommendation is that you authorize tonight the payment of $1,479,078 to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as the first installment of our $22 million and appropriate funds from the assigned San Luis Rey River reserve account.
Thank you, Mr. Bahaduri.
And I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have none.
Okay. Do we have a motion? There's a motion and a second. Councilmember Weiss?
I just have a question for staff. So the city typically lobbies for federal money that is outside of the Corps' budget for this project. Is there any way we can get that federal money that is outside the Corps? I know the stuff that's in the Corps' budget is theirs. Is there any way we can get credit for those federal funds against the city's share?
That's something that we're actually exploring, whether or not we do have the ability to do that, because certainly we have to get creative to come up with that additional money that you saw in that payment schedule.
Thank you.
And typically, federal money, as you know, they cannot, they do not allow us to use for matching fund. However, there is a line item in the new infrastructure bill that Congress passed that allows that kind of money to be used as matching fund for federal funds. So as the city manager mentioned, we are actively looking and working with our lobbies.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We do have a couple of 6 o'clock time certain public hearing items. We're going to go ahead and call item number 16. This is, there is a script here. Item number 16 is with respect to the formation and election for City of Oceanside Community Facilities District Number 2023-1, and this is called the North River Farms Public Facilities. Now is the time for public hearing related to the formation of City of Oceanside's Community Facilities District Number 2023-1. That's the North River Farms Public Facilities. The public hearing relating to the formation of Community Facilities District Number 2023-1 is now open. The council has received a staff report on this matter, which is hereby entered into the record of this public hearing. I would first ask staff for any comments on this matter.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the Council. I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director. I'm here tonight to present item number 16 on the agenda related to establishing a Community Facilities District for public improvements as part of the North River Farms This evening, staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution of formation establishing the Facility CFD and authorizing the levy of special taxes. Adopt a resolution determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness in the amount not to exceed $45 million. Direct city clerk to hold the election. Adopt the resolution certifying election results, and introduce the ordinance authorizing the levy of special taxes. In November 2019, council approved the North River Farms Project, a mixed-use housing development located along North River Road. Conditions of approval for the project included certain public improvements and building and operating a new fire station to service the area. To meet these conditions, the developer is requesting the formation of two Community Facilities Districts. A Facility CFD to fund the public improvements, which is item 16 that we are presenting right now, and a Services CFD to fund operations of the new fire station, which is item 17, which we will hear next. CFDs are special tax districts by which property owners in an established geographic area agree to impose a tax on property. In this case, the tax would fund public improvements and infrastructure, including the construction of a fire station. It is important to note that the city is not responsible for any debt incurred by the CFD. This debt is the responsibility of the property owners within the district. The formation of a CFD is allowed per council policy 300-02, the city's land secured financing The North River Farms Project will be responsible for significant traffic and infrastructure improvements, providing a substantial public benefit to the city. Some of these improvements include the construction of a new fire station, the purchase of a fire truck, widening of the College Avenue Bridge, widening of North River Farm Road, or North River Road, installation of larger sewer lines, installation of dual roundabout or North River Road, installation of larger sewer lines, installation of dual roundabouts and a traffic signal on North River Road, installation of new traffic signals at Leon Street and Madera Street Lane, contribution to improvements to the 76, contribution to the North Valley Lift Station improvements, and installation of a reclaimed water system. The maximum amount of bonded indebtedness proposed for the facility's CFD is $45 million. Per council policy 300-2, the land secured financing policy, the required value-to-lean ratio is at least four to one before debt issuance. The city used the services of DTA, the city's tax rate consultant, to perform a tax rate analysis in order to estimate the required assessment for each new residential unit. The assessment rates were calculated proportionally based on square footage of each unit. Rates for the facility's CFD differ depending on the zone and square footage of each unit. They range between $3,135 annually and $5,120 annually per unit. The rate would increase by 2% annually and include annual administrative costs. The assessment district would operate over the term of the debt service payments, usually 20 years, and then terminate. With both the facility's CFD and the fire services CFD assessments, the effective tax rate for each parcel is estimated to be approximately 1.65%, which is under the 2% maximum established by our city policy. The new fire station is required to be built and partially staffed after the 10th occupancy and fully staffed after the 33rd occupancy. This would not provide adequate property tax and CFD revenue to fund the operations of the station. To address this funding gap, the developer has agreed to reimburse the city in the amount of $1.05 million for costs of operating the fire station until special taxes and property taxes fully support the operations of the new fire station. Per the agreement, the funding is dependent on the formation of this North River Farms facility CFD. Without the facility's CFD, the city would not receive the gap funding. In conclusion, staff recommends that council approve the action items listed on this slide. I am here to answer any questions, along with Andrea Ress with DTA, the city's tax rate consultant, Brian Forbath with the city's bond council, and other city staff.
Is that it? Thank you very much. Okay, so we are now at the time where we can hear from the members of the public. Are there any advance requests to speak on this item?
We received one advance request to speak on this item.
Okay. You do not have to have submitted a slip to speak. This is a public hearing. If you wish to address this issue, you can come to the podium and speak, state your name and then speak for three, up to three minutes. The first person that, could you call the person?
Rachel White.
There you go. Rachel.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, and City of Oceanside. This sounds like a Melrose fee, and so what I'm concerned with is the 45 million, and that it's going to be charged to what's being termed a district. My mother lives not too far from that area, and the people who buy into that will have to pay not only property tax, not only their mortgage, their HOA, and then a Melrose fee. Then the city's going to have to come on top of that and pay for a fire station, and then add a new city tax, which may impact all homeowners within the City of Oceanside because the developer is asking you to assume the cost. It was vehemently voiced by the citizens of Oceanside in a vote that we do not want this development. We do not want North River Farms in the area. If we're to be a private community, that is going to require a lot of water for the trees and the fruit trees and everything else that no one but the residents will have access to. But we, the people of Oceanside, are going to be paying for the water and the fire department and the upkeep and the maintenance and the road repair. If this is what the developer is asking for, tell them thank you, but we're good. Take it someplace else. Thank you very much.
Are there any other requests to speak from the public? If there are, please stand, approach the podium, and you state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak.
My name is Richard Merrill. I'm an Oceanside citizen. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but one thing I see up here is that the residents of the city will not incur any debt from what's being voted on here. Is that correct? So in essence, I think there's X number of landholders right now that need to approve this, once the city council approves going forward with this. So let's assume there's a dozen landowners. At what point in time, if they cannot make the payments for this district, when are they in default? And does that mean that only those, those residents who have voted on it right now, if we're not building anything there, and it's still under, is it still under the, the people who have voted, the existing landowners, they're going to vote on this for the district? When do they become liable? Are they liable for the duration of this, this bond, basically? And I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. Maybe I'm not saying it clearly enough. My concern is that the city is going to incur debt, but I'm hearing that's not going to happen. So my question is, if there's no build-out, you know, the economy slows down, they have this bond, but there's still only 12 major owners there. Are they the 12 people that are held liable to pay this bond? And I know you guys don't answer questions, so I'm throwing that out. Another question I have, and I may be confusing with, with the next item you're going to vote on, but I know you're going to, this district is going to include future land. My question is, and I'm looking at a map here, the parcels within the boundaries, there's two parcels. One appears to be north of, of North River Road, the other seems to be south of North River Road. I'm a little confused because I followed this development all the way until the, pretty much the state overturned the citizens' vote. But my question is, this parcel, and it's 157-100-84 on the map, is, there was a lawsuit involved with the developer. The developer agreed not to build on this parcel. The parcel I see in this map, 157-100-84, is that the parcel the developer agreed not to build on? And if so, why is it in this district? I know you guys don't answer those questions. I'm just going to leave it there. Again, I followed this project for a long, long time. We knew this Melrose was coming, but it never was stated by the developer. And also, I'm a little concerned about relying on this to finance the fire station out there. So I'm just kind of looking out for the taxpayers of Oceanside. I understand what this is all about. You're going through the formalities, but it is what it is.
Thank you very much, Rich. Any other requests to speak from the public? Please approach the podium. You have up to three minutes to speak. Let us know your name for the record. You can put the mic closer to your, here? Yes, there you go.
Okay. Can I, what do I do? My name?
Your name and then your comments.
Okay. My name is Madison Lang, and my comments are about the San Luis Rey project that the gentleman was discussing, and I overlook the San Luis Rey where I live. So I was wondering, what were the environmental concerns that he was talking about that the Army Corps of Engineers couldn't finish, so you guys couldn't sign off on it? And what are the post-Katrina things that they learned? In other words, what will I be looking at when you go down there and start finishing whatever it is that you were supposed to finish a long time ago?
Thank you. This is the creation of the district, so those, those questions that you have, we're, we're actually past that.
Well, I saw it passed, but I, can I find out what the guy's planning to do behind my house?
Staff is, staff, Mr. Bahadur will be happy to answer your questions. Could you raise your hand again, Mr. Bahadur? There he is. He's walking. All right. Any other requests to speak?
Anything that's already passed, too late past.
He, he's going to answer your questions. This has to do with, with the CFD, the formation of an election for the Community Facilities District.
Hi, my name is Kelly O'Neil. Hello, Madam Mayor and fellow city council members and all of the citizens of Oceanside. I'm, okay, I'm talking about the CFD, and what concerns me is that the state, one more time, the state overturns the citizens' vote, and the state is overturning a lot of our wishes to our neighborhood. And I want to know, what are our city councilmen's members doing about it? Are you standing, this is against the Constitution of the United States for the state to come in and tell us how to design our neighborhoods? And you all took oaths to protect us, and we voted for you, and you're supposed to be representing us. Why are you listening to the state and not us? That's, I want to know.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other requests to speak on this item? I do not see anyone rising, so I will now go to the council if there are any questions from the dais. You'll have a chance to speak later, but if you have any questions of staff, this is, you can ask them right now. Councilmember Joyce?
I know there's a lot of concerns about the 76. Can you clarify what improvements the, to the 76 will come with this specifically? I just want to clarify, it's not like expanding the 76. It's not that kind of improvements, right? It's kind of more simple improvements to integrate the North River Road with the 76?
College.
Sorry.
One minute, let me look here. So contribution to improvements to 76, a contribution to the college and 76 intersection.
All right. Thank you. I was just, wanted to clarify, that's it.
Okay, at this point, I don't see any other questions from the members of the public?
May I have a question?
Oh, yes. My apologies.
Just for staff, and just to clarify for everyone watching, to have, so we're going to vote on the facilities first, and then we're going to vote on the services CFD second, which is?
Fire service.
Fire services CFD, but the facilities district includes fire station, the equipment inside the fire station, correct? The fire truck and anything that needs to operate?
Yes, the facility's CFD pays for the construction of the new fire station. It purchases the fire truck, and it pays for the gap funding agreement.
So since you have to approve both, we have to approve both to actually have a functioning and staffed fire station, right? You can't, you can't turn, we can't say no to this first one and then yes to the second one, because we wouldn't have a fire station for the firefighters to operate in, correct?
We wouldn't. We haven't identified any other funding to build the fire station or pay for like the, the gap funding.
So just to jump in, both of these CFDs, although we're handling them separately, collectively, they provide a financing mechanism to both build, equip, and operate the station. We've split them into two because they're two distinct sets of resolutions and ordinances before you.
Okay. Put simply, to have a functioning fire station, we need to approve both of these, correct?
Unless there were other funding identified, yes. That, this is the funding that's been identified, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Has the city clerk received written protests to any of the matters addressed in this public hearing from any registered voters or landowners of more than 50% of the acreage located within Community Facilities District number 2023-1?
I have received zero written protests, and a written protest is if they constitute a majority protest, more than 50% of, or six, whichever is more, registered voters or half of non-exempt landowners.
Okay. If there are no further comments from the public or the members of the council, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. And again, this is a time, the council again gets to speak and make a motion. Are there any motions to approve the resolution before us?
I have a question.
Councilmember Weiss?
I just have a question for staff. If you can address Mr. Merrill's concern about the landowners and who's responsible and whether or not the citizens of Oceanside are responsible?
I'll have our bond counsel answer that, Brian Forbath. The citizens of Oceanside are not responsible, the landowners are, but Brian can further elaborate.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, Councilmember Weiss, Brian Forbath, from Stradlin, Yaw, Carlson, Ralph. So the, if and when we issue bonds, the city decides to issue bonds, again, that's going to be in the discretion of the city when the time is appropriate and development is sufficiently progressed, that the credit quality is such that the city would approve the issuance of bonds on the property, so it satisfies the four-to-one value-to-lean test and other requirements in the acquisition agreement, which include the posting of a letter of credit by the developer to pay for two years of debt service on the bonds with, when and if they're issued, in case there's event of default. But most importantly, I think what's been misconstrued a little bit is the fact that the special taxes are not a personal liability of any of the property owners. They run with the land. There's a notice of special tax that's recorded on the property, and if a property owner fails to pay the special taxes on that property, then the property is subject to foreclosure and sale to satisfy the special tax requirement at that time. And it's not a individual liability of any of the, the property owners, current or in the future.
Thank you. And I presume this type of financing is similar to what the city did for Arrowood and Pacific Coast Business Park and other?
Ocean Ranch, Pacific Coast Business Park, and the Moro Hills, Arrowood Development, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
I was just going to move staff recommendation.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. As to my comments, I agree with Ms. White. I do not like Melrose projects. I know on 15, you'll see the, the signs said, oh, this is not Melrose. They, these are very difficult homes to sell because, and you saw the, that they were going to be increasing every year for the 20-year period. The City of Oceanside has actually had one failure of a Melrose, and the City of Oceanside did have to step in. I do recall those conversations, and I, you know, the, this is the funding mechanism, it's not the responsibilities and the requirements. This is a funding mechanism. So please vote. Wait, let me see. Yes, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
The resolutions that we have just adopted call an election, let's see, call for an election within Community Facilities District number 2023-1, which is to be held by, at this time, by the city clerk.
And all ballots have been cast in connection with the election for Communities Facilities District number 2023-1, and the election is now closed. The ballot propositions have been approved by more than two-thirds of the votes cast in the election for Community Facilities District number 2023-1, and the election results are certified.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Having received confirmation from the city clerk of the results of the election, I would entertain a motion to approve the following. Resolution of the city council, the City of Oceanside, California, acting in its capacity as a legislative body of the City of Oceanside Community Facilities District number 2023-1, called the North River Farms Public Facilities, certifying election results. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second? And there must be a vote, not just the resolution is adopted, right?
Yeah, you'll need to vote on the resolution.
Right. That was left out of the script, so. Okay, please vote. Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, 401, Sanchez, no.
The resolution certifying the results of the election for Community Facilities District number 2023-1 has passed, and I would now ask for the city... For the clerk to conduct a first reading... The clerk, it would be...
I will do that.
City attorney, first reading of the ordinance relating to Communities Facilities District number 2023-1, which would authorize the levy of a special tax in accordance with a special tax formula approved by the landowners within the Community Facilities District at the election for Community Facilities District number 2023-1. This is very wordy.
Yes, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, California, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of the City of Oceanside Community Facility District number 2023-1, North River Farms Public Facilities authorizing the levy of special taxes.
Move introduction.
So now I ask for a motion to introduce the ordinance for Community Facilities District number 2023-1. There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 401, Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Next is item number 17, and this is for fire services. Now is the time for public hearing relating to the formation of City of Oceanside Community Facilities District number 20... Excuse me, 2023-2, North River Farms Fire Services. The public hearing relating to the formation of Community Facilities District number 2023-2 is now open. The council has received a staff report on this matter, which is hereby entered into the record of this public hearing. I would first ask staff for any additional comments on this matter. Do you have additional comments?
All right, good evening again, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director. Tonight, I will also be presenting item number 17 on the agenda related to establishing a Community Facilities District for Fire Services as part of the North River Farms project. This evening, staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution of formation establishing North River Farms Fire Services CFD, authorizing the levy of a special tax, direct the city clerk to hold the election, adopt the resolution certifying election results, and introduce the ordinance authorizing the levy of special tax. Per the conditions of approval of the project, the city agreed that funding the operations of the new fire station would be from a Community Facilities District and a portion of the additional property tax generated by residential development. The additional property tax is estimated to be 1.1 million, and the annual cost to operate the new fire station is estimated to be 1.3 million. Staff worked with DTA and the developer to determine the required tax rate. Staff is recommending that 59% of the increased property tax be applied to the fire station operations. The service CFD would cover the remaining operating expense and would be about $1,600 per unit. The rate would increase by CPI for the San Diego region with a maximum increase of 6% and a minimum increase of 2% each year. The district would also include a future annexation area. With both the Facilities CFD and the Fire Services CFD assessments, the effective tax rate for each parcel is estimated to be approximately 1.65%, which is under the 2% maximum established by our city policy. It is important to note that the North River Farms Fire Services CFD assessments will apply to future homeowners in the North River Farms project only. They will not apply to existing properties within the annexation area. Annexation into the CFD requires City Council's approval and a vote of the property owner. Existing developed properties in South Morro Hills will not be asked to annex into the Fire Services CFD. Staff anticipates the future annexation area for the Fire Services CFD will only apply to residential projects that seek approvals at densities inconsistent with the existing planning and zoning designations. It is possible there will be no such projects in the future, however, the annexation is being designated now in order to provide council with this option. In conclusion, staff recommends that council approve the action items listed on this slide. I am here to answer any questions, along with Andrea Ress with DTA, the city's tax rate consultant, and Brian Forbath, the city's bond counsel, and other city staff.
Thank you, Ms. Moya. This is the time for public hearing. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium, state your name, and you can speak for up to three minutes. Do we have any advanced requests to speak?
We only have two. We have Rachel White and Jimmy Knott.
Okay. Let's call them up first, Ms. White, and then... She's left, okay. So, Mr. Knott is... Oh, there you are.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherri Lane. I wasn't really going to speak tonight, but looking at the Fire Services, I had to take a step back, because over the 30-plus years, I've basically been a mobile home resident, and having to have been rescuing people in flooding situations, and knowing the history of this area that's being talked about, I can't ignore the 1916 flood that inundated this area. The flood and many floods thereafter affected this area. This should be dedicated as a fire rescue and safety district services area, not just a fire district area because of the dangers that are involved. You also need to take and consider expanding out the public safety rescue equipment that will be needed when this will take and occur again. Also, the public education component, and inspections, and individual protection equipment for each home or community that's involved. That was not mentioned into this presentation. What also needs to be done is a very simple thing, too, is needing, according to reports after reports after reports that I've read over the years, including out of the San Diego County Water Authority and the 1916 flood report from the US government, is flood control issues from Mount Palomar and Paula clear to Oceanside. Without those safety measures, it's gonna happen again. Mark those words. If you don't believe it, go talk to the feds, talk to the state, talk to the US Army Corps of Engineers. They've been right in almost every one of their predictions. In my part, they were right in a number of times. In the city, with the help of our engineers, including Councilmember Weiss...
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
...that has protected us. Protect those people, please.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Any other requests to speak from members of the public? Please approach the podium.
Hi, Sandra Martinez. Mr. Knott brought up some really interesting points, but what I wanted to point out is... And this is something that the public just doesn't get told enough. Our city council has no control over these developments, essentially, and when I started coming to these meetings, I was really in disbelief that they couldn't do anything, but they can't. It's really regulated by the state, and in Huntington... Was it Huntington Beach, I think? They tried to go against what the state wanted for development, and the state just sued them. And since the state has our infinite tax dollars as their resource to sue cities, a city can't win. So if people really want the whole perspective of development to be shifted to what the citizens want versus what the state wants, we need to change the people that are in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak?
Hello again, I'm Kelly O'Neil, still in Oceanside, just still my hometown, and I respectfully disagree with Mrs. Martinez. You do have power. You have power over the state, you have the power to say no to the state, stop taking their money. We have $500 million of Oceanside surplus money that was given to the Bank of New York Mellon, which is an international bank, doing international investing, when why was that money taken out of Oceanside? You know how much interest that money gets? Where's that interest going? We have the power not to take the state's money, Oceanside does, and we have the power to say no to the state. All of you do, that's why we elected you. We have our God-given rights from God, that the Constitution was written to... That you guys are elected to protect those... That we continue to have those rights. The state, Sacramento, doesn't have the right to come in here and tell us how to design our neighborhoods, and why are you guys allowing it? That's what I want to know. And, yeah, we... You were elected to protect the rights that we were given by our higher power, okay?
Thank you very much.
No, I have...
I think you left... You dropped your pen.
I have a minute and 30 seconds, Madam Mayor, okay? So, I want to know about why we took our money out of Oceanside and gave it to an international bank, when these are international ideas coming into our city, ripping it to shreds.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? I see no one else rising. Are there any comments from members of the council? Councilmember Joyce?
I would just want to be clear that I do have concerns about the will of our city not being respected in this development. Tonight, we're voting on funding fire services, and actually, do we have... We can ask questions right now?
Yes.
So, concerns about rescue versus fire, I would assume fire would be doing some of that service as well.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Joyce, Pete Lawrence, Deputy Fire Chief. The Oceanside Fire Department is an all-risk organization. We provide fire, rescue, lifeguard, marine safety, urban search and rescue, flood rescue, every aspect, hazardous materials response. We provide all of those services to the community and support of our neighbors and surrounding agencies.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Chief Lawrence did that just like I taught him, great job.
I wonder when those kind of comments were gonna start happening?
I did want to add, though, because I think in the previous, there was a comment made about it being a local fire station and everybody paying for it, and I think it's important that people know that all of our fire stations are part of a mutual aid system, they don't just serve one particular area, they move and go across the entire city, so...
I don't know if you had any comments on that.
No, that is correct, and we go off of a closest unit concept, and so when the call comes in, depending upon the type of call, the closest unit responds to that call. So, for example, the fire station that will go in service to support the north or the Morro Hills area also will be second due into everything along Vandegrift out to the back gate. It will be closer than Fire Station 6, which is over off of Gwahomi, basically, North River and... Or, sorry, North Santa Fe and Mesa. Station 5 is the primary, but when Station 5 is gone, other stations have to cover. Station 9 will now be the second due all the way along that corridor.
Councilmember Weiss?
I have a question for the city manager. Looking at the tax rate analysis slide, so we're applying 59% of the future property tax generated by the residential development to operating the fire station, for which fire gets about 20% of the city's general fund budget, roughly, which means somewhere down the road, parks and rec, libraries are going to not get what would be their fair share of property tax revenues from this development. Are you comfortable with these numbers?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, yes, we are comfortable with those numbers, recognizing what you said is true.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Kyne?
I'm gonna repeat something I said three years ago, this came before us, and I voted not to approve the project. Ask a quick question to staff, so the fire station approximately is 1.2 million a year, correct? Just started to operating. So, we're gonna raise $600,000 from the CFD. Where's the other $600,000 gonna come from the general fund? That's where we pay for fire services, unless they all came from this, correct?
So that would be the percentage of property tax that would then go towards the operations. So part of it is the CFD revenue, and part of it is the percentage of property tax to cover that 1.2 million annually.
Okay, so we're not using any general fund money at all right now for this project?
That property tax would go into general fund.
Exactly.
That's general fund revenues, correct?
I just... When this project came forward, we were told repeatedly that it's not gonna cost the general fund any money, and I think, especially as it went from 600 to 400 houses just to pay that, you have the 20% to 60% apportionment of the property taxes, and it puts the city in a difficult position where we're at now, so I'm not very happy about it.
I think that was a comment, right? Not a question? Right, okay. Okay, comment that I have, there were a few comments that were made that the state required us to pass this project. Actually, that was not true for this area, this is farmland, and the laws regarding density bonus and all of that, that is on non-farm land projects. So, I understand concerns about what the state is doing, I hate it too as well, this idea about density bonus and not being able to take into consideration the character of the community, but that... Those comments actually do not apply to this project. This project was actually passed by the city council. Has the city clerk received written protests to any of the matters addressed in this public hearing from any registered voters or landowners of more than 50% of the acreage located within Community Facilities District number 2023-2?
I have received zero written protests, and a written protest, again, is if they constitute a majority protest of more than 50% or six, whichever is more registered voters or half of non-exempt landowners.
Thank you. If there are no further comments from the public or the members of the council, I hereby declare this public hearing closed. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution before us.
I'll move the motion.
There's a motion to approve the resolution before us, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. The resolution that we have just adopted calls for an election within Community Facilities District number 2023-2, which is to be held at this time by the city clerk.
All the ballots have been cast in connection with the election for Community Facilities District number 2023-2, and the election is now closed. The ballot proposition has been approved by more than two-thirds of the votes cast in the election for Community Facilities District number 2023-2, and I hereby certify the election results. results.
Thank you. Having received confirmation from the city clerk of the results of the election, I would entertain a motion to approve the following. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Oceanside, California, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of City of Oceanside, Community Facilities District Number 2023-2, North River Farms Fire Service, certifying election results. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. The resolution certifying the results of the election for Community Facilities District Number 2023-2 has passed, and I would now ask for the clerk to conduct a first read, no, sorry--
Sorry.
--the city attorney--
We'll fix that. On future scripts, we'll fix that. Hopefully, we won't have anymore.
And next time, could you cut it down a little bit? Because a lot of words. Okay. I would now ask for the city attorney to conduct a first reading of the ordinance relating to Community Facilities District Number 2023-2, which would authorize a levy of a special tax in accordance with a special tax formula approved by the landowners within the Community Facilities District at the election for Community Facilities District Number 2023-2.
That was pretty wordy. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council, the City of Oceanside, California, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of City of Oceanside, Community Facility District Number 2023-2, North River Farms Fire Services, authorizing the levy of special taxes.
I would now ask for a motion to introduce the ordinance for Community Facilities District Number 2023-2.
Move introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Kym, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions. So for the first CFD, I'd like to hear the mayor's reasoning for voting no on the fire station, but yes on the fire personnel. How do those two match together?
I have voted for the CFDs for fire service. I did vote accordingly when this came before the council.
I don't think that made it clear. I'm just, I think it's more for clarification for everyone watching. And this is one of the disappointing things in politics, when you try to appease both sides and say, I didn't support it, but I did support it. So you didn't support--
I did not support the Melrose. I do support a CFD for fire services throughout, for new development.
So how are the fire, so how are the firefighters going to operate without a fire station or a fire truck? And you didn't support the fire station or the fire truck, but you supported firefighters? I just, for me, I'd like to know going forward--
I do believe that the developer has the ability to raise the money to be doing this, to establish these requirements, to meet the requirements and these needs. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
And that is it for these two. Thank you for your patience. Back to general items. Last one there is 15. Approval of agreement for reimbursement of costs for the construction of a new irrigation system with Oceanside Golf LLC for the Oceanside Municipal Golf Course located 825 Douglas Drive. Appropriate $2 million from the golf course fund to the municipal golf course irrigation improvement project. And authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. Ms. Gutierrez?
Mayor, excuse me, because of the location of my home to the golf course and in consultation with the city attorney, it's best that I recuse myself from this--
Oh, golfer.
Well, some people might say--
Property ownership, Mayor.
What was that?
Yeah, I know. I was kidding. Okay. So we do have conflict, a conflict so noted by Councilmember Robinson. He has left the dais. Ms. Gutierrez?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Vicki Gutierrez, real estate manager for the Public Works Department, Property Management Division. The item before you is, staff is recommending that the city council approve an agreement for reimbursement of costs for the construction of a new irrigation system with Oceanside Golf LLC for the Oceanside Municipal Golf Course located at 825 Douglas Drive. Appropriate $2 million from the golf course fund to the municipal golf course irrigation improvement project, and authorize city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. To give you some background, on June 23 of 2010, the City and Oceanside Golf LLC entered into a golf course management and operations agreement for the golf course to manage the Oceanside Municipal Golf Course. The management agreement was for an initial period of 10 years and was extended for additional five years in June of 2020. The agreement now expires in June 30 of 2025. Oceanside Golf LLC has requested to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the city for the construction and installation of the new irrigation system. And I'm going to continue to call that the improvements. OGL will engage a contractor directly for these services and will also provide project management and oversight for the installation of the improvements to ensure timely and successful completion of the project. OMGC's revenues have been increasing in recent years with the net income in fiscal year 2122 totaling approximately $1,7414. At this time, all operating and management costs of the golf course are being fully covered from funds generated by the golf course, as well as allowing for the city to save for future improvements at the course. The existing irrigation system is in an antiquated system and in great need of replacement. The new system will have advanced technology. It'll allow for remote control monitoring and operation of the system to allow for more precise scheduling of watering, more efficient maintenance of the course. And the new system will also tap into our recycled water project. The new system will have a significant impact on reducing the water usage at the golf course, which will in turn save money for the city and assist in conserving water resources. The proposed improvements were designed by Coats Irrigation Consultants, Incorporated, who prepared the construction plans and specifications, and those were approved by the city engineer in September of 2022. The budget for the improvements totaled $3,610,804, and they include a contingency for unanticipated costs that may occur during the construction process. The city will pay Oceanside Golf a project management fee of 2% of the total actual construction costs incurred, which is also provided in their operating agreement with the city, as compensation for coordinating and supervision of the construction of the improvements. Oceanside Golf will require prevailing wages to be paid for the improvements. The installation of the improvements are estimated to take approximately three months and will begin in approximately December of 2023, this year, at the end of this year. The course will remain open during construction of the improvements with a minimum of six to 12 holes consistently playable at the course. The goal is to have as many holes open as we can revolving around the construction so that we can keep our revenues in order to continue having money to fund the course. Due to supply chain issues, the mobilization and acquisition of materials is going to start a little bit earlier than the construction, which will be in about March of 2023 as well. So our recommendation is, first, council, is to approve an agreement for the reimbursement costs for the construction of the new irrigation system with Oceanside Golf LLC for the municipal golf course. Appropriate $2 million for the golf course fund to municipal golf course irrigation improvement project, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. That concludes my presentation, and I'm now available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have none.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Councilmember Joyce?
I just thank staff for bringing this forward. Water is such an important part of our future living here in the desert of North San Diego. So I appreciate any of our efforts to make sure that our infrastructure is supporting lowered use and recycled water. So thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you very much. Now, we're finally on item number 19. I see a sea of blue. I'm sure this, these are items, public, items not on this agenda, public comments. How many do we have?
We have 21 speakers.
21. It is definitely a sea of blue tonight. So two minutes, y'all, if that's two minutes. If you need a little more, tell me at the beginning, you know? We have been receiving your emails. So starting with--
Doug Smith, to be followed by Carol Stone, to be followed by Kim Stone, to be followed by Celarina Cornet. And we do have two microphones, so make your way up to the next available microphone.
Good evening, Mayor Esther Sanchez and honorable councilmembers. My name is Douglas Smith, and I'm here with residents, neighbors, friends in Oceanside dressed in blue that are--
Do you want to all stand up? Stand up. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I got two minutes. I'll refer to them as the Eddie Jones Grassroots Group. We've always been constrained to access CS76 by Bennett and Fusat Roads. There are two new developments impacting us, and they are the Eddie Jones Warehouse and Distribution Facility and Ocean Camp. These projects are modifying access, changing the environment, access by emergency services, and quality of life for the residents adjacent to and use Bennett and Fusat respectively. I would like to share with you, the members of the Oceanside City Council, some of our concerns regarding the proposed development. Since the initial presentation at the Oceanside City Council Developers Conference, Wednesday, September 8, 2021, the plan has been open for discussion. Although the proposal states that it will be 65% warehouse, 114 truck bays, 28% manufacturing, and others, we have many concerns. If there is time, a total of five will be presented tonight. Transparency is our top concern, for which I will be speaking as long as I can. In addition, there is pollution, traffic impact, safety, and emergency services. I'm going to skip to, the City of Oceanside has enabled the idea of transparency with the use of eTrakit, thank you. The Eddie Jones Grassroots Group has engaged with the developer and the city council with open meetings, our most recent meeting, 2 February 2023, with district-- thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Carol Stone, after Carol is Kim Stone, after Kim is Celarina Cornet.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Carol Stone, and I reside just off Bennett Road. Over the years, Oceanside has some real changes. We have become a true tourist destination due to our beach, beers, marina, hotels, restaurants, just to name a few. Now is not the time to drop the ball and allow a mega warehouse to obstruct our vision and to obstruct our future. The proposed mega warehouse containing 100-plus truck bays, 500-plus parking, and operating 24 hours a day is clearly a red flag, truly. Pollution, pollution, pollution. Noise pollution going 24 hours a day. Light pollution impacts wildlife as well as families. Water, land pollution. The SLE watershed is right here. Don't forget the skate park, the bike trails, Ocean Camp that's coming up. Besides family entertainment areas that are close by, there are also schools, churches, and families living short way. Our air pollution is one of our main concerns. With the added trucks and vehicles, it is estimated that every 500 truck trips produces one ton of air pollutants, one ton. A mega warehouse the size of 10 football fields operating at full capacity, we would be looking at five tons of nitrous oxide and carbon dioxide blowing every day here in Oceanside. These toxic pollutants can cause asthma, bronchitis, pneumonia, and cancer. The state of California has already issued many warnings regarding industries being built in close proximity to family or family use areas. We are open to change, and but we are very mindful of pollution, 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 noise pollution, light pollution, wet water, land pollution, and of course, air pollution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim?
Honorable Mayor and city council, as well as staff. My name is Kim Stone, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my airport neighbors. We represent about 1,200 homes, over 1,200 homes, north of the San Luis Rey River. And our only points of ingress and egress are Fusat and Benet Avenue, or Benet Roads. These, so our major concern is the traffic impacts that's going to be caused by the Eddie Jones Distribution Warehouse. Last year, the city council rejected an Amazon warehouse project because neighbors complained that the 24/7 distribution warehouse would create a menadry of noise, traffic, light, and pollution. The rejected facility plans called for 15 semi-truck terminals. The Eddie Jones project calls for 114 truck terminals plus 60 truck trailer parking stalls, almost eight times larger than the rejected project. The plan states that the heavy truck traffic will be limited to Benet Road, thus creating excessive traffic congestion. Car traffic will be limited to Alex Road to Fusat, which is creating traffic hazard for the young skaters at Prince Park, as well as the already congested traffic that's generated by Ocean Camp. According to Oceanside's zoning ordinance, more than six heavy-duty trucks on property at one time is considered a trucking terminal and requires a conditional use permit. The CUP requires compliance with the general plan in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood and will not be detrimental to properties. This project clearly does not meet that criteria, or we wouldn't be speaking to you this evening. And I'm out of time. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Celarina?
Good evening, honorable councilmembers and mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Celarina Cornet. I'm a resident of Oceanside City and have lived here for 18 years. I'm here today to express my concern, as everyone behind us in blue, about the proposed warehouse project on 250 Eddie Jones Way. The proposed project includes 114 semi-truck bays, 60 semi-truck parking spots, and over 500 auto parking spots. The community north of San Luis Rey River includes thousands of homes. The residents there are limited to two roads for ingress and egress. These two roads are Fusat Road and Bennett Road. Most everyone is aware about the Ocean Camp project that we just was approved, the congestion that it's going to provide on Fusat Road. Now, we're all going to use Bennett Road. The Eddie Jones Warehouse will have a negative impact on the community. Our homes share a border to the north with the brush terrain. During the hot and dry seasons, these areas are prone to wildfires. A fire in the brush terrain is easily, not easily extinguished since traditional firefighting equipment cannot be used on the steep slopes and ridges. We recently had a brush fire where Oceanside police asked residents to evacuate. The chaos this evacuation caused to the neighborhood was overwhelming. We had fire engines and police entering on one side and worried families evacuating with the kids and animals on the other side. Thank goodness the damage was mild, but just imagine if the fire was larger. With windy conditions and a rapid spread of the fire caused emergency evacuation. If the Eddie Jones Warehouse is approved, it will add 100 big rig trucks trying to depart a warehouse while residents are also trying to escape for safety. This obviously would create a chokehold for our residents in the community that could not escape fast enough but possibly perish. I'm asking for all of you to place the safety of the citizens of Oceanside as your top priority when considering approval of the 250 Eddie Jones Warehouse project. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Ms. Wanda Baker?
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. The Eddie Jones project came to our attention, and so we're bringing it to your attention as we are very, very much against this project. I have been specifically tasked with bringing up the vision of our neighborhoods and surrounding areas. We currently have about 1,200 homes nestled between the airport and Camp Pendleton with only two roads in and out of the 76 state highway. We have, or will have, the Ocean Camp with a-- We have, or will have, the Ocean Camp with a wave park and 700 homes to start with, and a small mall with a hotel, Prince Gate Park, the possibility of another hotel on 76th at Airport Road, and of course, the airport with some small businesses along Airport Road on the north side. Now, it is being proposed that a trucking warehouse included in this area that is massive building, that is a massive building of 568,000 square feet. Please note the existing, I have somebody, Zeb, I guess?
Lay it on.
I already laid it on. Okay. This is 568,000 square feet. The existing building is the red. That doesn't even show. It's the red building that's marked in there. The, that was the existing building. This is, it has the eight-foot wall around it, and that is the size that's proposed outside of that red building. What do we see as homeowners? For the future, if this is built, we see an Amazon-type warehouse. Doesn't have to be Amazon, it can be Home Depot, Walmart. The owners have been known to build buildings and then sell them. We are currently an area of skateboarding.
Okay.
Hello, I am Phoenix Graven. I am a senior at Oceanside High School, and I strongly oppose the Eddie Jones Warehouse Project due to the pollution, traffic that it will cause, and how it will affect emergency services. Semi-trucks have some of the highest rates of pollution. According to this Climate Nexus article called "Climate Health and Economic Benefits of Shifting to Electric Heavy Duty Trucks," heavy-duty trucks are some of the fastest-growing sources of climate pollution in the U.S., emitting nearly a quarter of climate pollutions from transporting, even though the trucks, the trucks are just 4% of the vehicles on the road. They are also responsible for 45% of the nitrogen oxide pollution in the 40, and 57% of these fine particles pollution in the U.S. Both of these are linked to premature death and chronic illness such as heart disease, lung cancer, stroke, and childhood asthma. With the proposal of this project, we would have hundreds of semi-trucks coming in and out of this one small area 24/7. As everyone else has been saying, it's 114 slots for semi-trucks. This will cause an obscene amount of pollution to not only the air, to everyone around there, to the San Luis Rey River that is right behind it. I noticed on my walk over here that we have several trash cans and recycling bins that say "Keep Our Oceans Blue." This should extend to our rivers as well, not to mention the traffic. The 76 is already backed up with traffic a lot. I know many of you probably came here on the 76 and know just how bad the traffic can be there. Adding semi-trucks coming on and off that constantly is going to back it up to a gridlock. Semi-trucks take about two lanes up to turn on and off of roads, not to mention they have to have a larger following distance and stopping distance due to their size. This creates so much more traffic, which then leads into my next point of stopping emergency services. Within a mile radius, you have not only the Fire Station Number 7, you also have Fire Depot Number 7, and the Fire Department Training Center. All of these would be heavily impacted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wow.
Counsel member Joyce?
Just really briefly before we move on, I wanted to thank Phoenix as a high school student for coming and speaking today. We really are so excited to have high school students involved in the civic process and bringing their voice into the chamber, so keep coming back and keep staying involved with what's going on here. We appreciate your voice.
OHS, we are the best. Jonathan Hernandez?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Hernandez, and I'm also a senior at Oceanside High School. And I just wanted to express why I don't agree with this plan to create the Eddie Jones Warehouse Project near the airport street, and I think it's just because we all have the same feeling that we all just hate being stuck in traffic, being stuck in time, not moving forward. It's just not pleasurable for anyone. And the trailers that would come in, as she said before, it would just create so much more traffic that's already there, and it would not be helpful at all. And another point I wanted to point out is that I think Oceanside should try moving forward, gentrifying, but still keeping close to where it's at, and adding just different recreational activities. I don't think the trailer parks or the Eddie Jones Warehouse is the way to go in building things in there. And I'm wearing blue, but I'm not with them, but I'm glad I'm wearing blue because. Yeah. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe Rachel White is gone?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Then we have.
Stacy Jackson.
Stacy Jackson.
Greetings, Stacy Jackson. I recently moved to Oceanside pre-pandemic in 2020 to the community directly behind the airport and near the Eddie Jones Project. You know, obviously, there's only two ways in and out of our community, so we're, I'm very concerned about traffic congestion, and there's been no discussion about mitigation of traffic on 76th, as well as constant noise and air pollution, et cetera. Generally speaking, you know, I'm not a NIMBY. I actually embrace the Ocean Camp project. I embrace the housing and the retail facilities that they're going to build at Fusat Road. But I do feel like the warehouse does not fit the vibe of what is currently going on at the corner of Fusat with Ocean Camp, with the Go-Jump and the airport facilities there. You know, with Oceanside being more of a tourist destination and the upswing of downtown Oceanside with new hotels and restaurants, I feel like this project is out of scope for the vibe that we're trying to build here in Oceanside, the vibe of our community. It just sticks out, it's like it's being shoehorned in there. And I think with Ocean Camp and the houses, it is, and the skate park and the Go-Jump, I feel like it's a little touristy destination for everyone to enjoy, but who can enjoy it with all the madness of the traffic and the trucks? So I feel like it is a project that is out of scope and scale. I think that when I moved here, the existing warehouse is small, it was almost unnoticedable when you drove past. This is definitely going to be noticed by your guests who want to come to your house. And I feel for the people who live closer to that and into the neighborhood, and I fear for their property values, that is not something that's going to assist their property values, especially the houses that have direct oversight across the river and into that warehouse facility. The profile is much larger, much taller in scope. Thank you.
Four names, Kadir Rashid Nelson Green?
Yes, ma'am. Greetings, city council members. My name is Kadir Nelson, and I am a senior at Oceanside High School. I reside in Oceanside. Although I don't live close to the Eddie Jones Warehouse Project, this change would still affect me. I would like to share my opinion about the, about the changes, hoping that you would listen. There would be positives to this project. It would really only be within the neighborhood, and even then, there would be a lot of pollution being produced by the factory with all of the smoke. This would, this would take a lot of homes from animals, it would get rid of a lot of homeless situations, but it would just move them to another part of the neighborhood or the city. At this, at the same time, this all sounds good, but it is very selfish to rest, to the rest of the city. It causes so much unneeded traffic for people that need to commute through the 76th and the 175. If people are in a rush to get to work, to the hospital, or if they need to get home, this could potentially be a problem if traffic backs up the freeway. It could also cause noise pollution with cars and semi-trucks. Personally, I do not think that this is a logical or ethical addition to the community, and I say no to the Eddie Jones Warehouse Project.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council and esteemed mayor. I would like to make important of the opposition to the Eddie Jones Warehouse.
Could you say your name again? You're not Jackon Cook?
Jakeon Cook.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
No, no problem.
You can give him the extra seconds. Yeah, my apologies.
My bad. So I would like to state the opposition for the Eddie Jones Warehouse Project. I believe that Oceanside is a very well-brought community to the public, and I used to be a resident of Florida as well before this, and I have seen what industries do to big cities, and they bring a lot of tourists, and the outcome of this project would just add more tourists, which means more people, and that is good for the economy through financial growth, but it's bad for the local and local population of Oceanside due to problems such as population would inflate and traffic would become worse. But we really want to protect our land and our beaches and our oceans and everything that Ocean has, that Oceanside has, that makes it a beautiful and significant town unlike any other industrial town, such as the beaches, the parks, all the national forests and everything. If you add this, you're adding more pollution and technology, which means to support it, we should do, change it and make it easier for more people to transport to the beaches and quicker for them to get to beaches with electrical bus transportation, easier bike management to get to the beaches, and honestly, just protect our beautiful city for the beaches, the population, all the animals that strive to live here. And honestly, in my opinion, this wouldn't be smart to go with the Eddie Warehouse Project just because of how much negative impact it could have on the economy and our, like, environment as a whole. Oceanside is a beautiful town, as I've said many times because of nervousness, but I believe that Oceanside should stay Oceanside and stay strong and protect itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephen Hernandez. I'm also a student at Oceanside High School, and I am currently a senior right now. So I originally wasn't born here or nothing like that. I actually come from New Jersey. I come from the East Coast. And back over there, a factory came into town when I was like five years old. I originally came from Clayton, New Jersey, Gulf Dolphins, but anyways. What was it called? Louis Factory Bread Factory came in there, and it was the size of two football fields. And I remember every morning when that factory opened up, semi-trucks were coming in and out every single day. I would wake up originally at 7:30 to catch the bus at 8:00. That bus did not come until 8:30 because of traffic due to the new, due to the new factory. There was a lot of problems. And what I'm trying to say here today is that, yes, with this new factory, right, there will be pollution problems, there will be, there can be financial benefits, but the thing I'm mainly worried about is kids. Kids take, the kids at Oceanside High School take the 303 bus every single day that passes through that, through that, what's it called, land every single day. And what I'm worried about is that kids start getting, arriving late to school or having to wake up significantly earlier just to get to school on time. If this factory is put here, traffic is going to get a lot worse. And coming from an East Coast kid and coming to the West Coast, seeing the traffic over here, oh my God. But anyways, by adding this factory, it's only going to make things worse. And I'm worried about my friends that take the 303 every single day, not just to get to school, but also go back home. If this factory is added, it will just make things a lot more worse, slower. And honestly, Oceanside's amazing. It's a beautiful town. I love it over here. Adding a factory is just not really the vibe. I know one of you guys said it. It's a beautiful town, and I only think a factory would just not really make it, I wouldn't be proud of it if a factory was here, just to make it look good. But anyways, thank you for your time. I hope, I hope you guys have a great day. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Agustin Lopez?
Oh, he's not here. Yeah, I believe.
Okay. Then we move on to Ken Leighton.
Well, you went to OHS, too?
That's right.
Yeah.
Counsel member Weiss, over the last 35 years, you have served the city. I would say it is safe to say one of your sweet spots was not providing for the countless kids and adult volunteers who came before the council pleading for more soccer and football fields and basketball courts. Indeed, as city manager, mayor, and council member, you were in the driver's seat allowing all those usable air-cozoned soccer fields to be turned over to private profit-making, to a private profit-making company that serves kids whose parents can pay hundreds of dollars a year to play in a private league. So imagine my surprise when I heard that you, at the January 25th meeting here, wanted to advance the idea that a gym should be built at Baldurama Park on San Diego Street in the East Side neighborhood. Quelle chouprise! Gee, Mr. Weiss, it wouldn't be because, as was established years ago, that the Beach Community Center could only be torn down if a similar facility was built in the coastal zone. And what do you know, Baldurama Park is in that coastal zone. But the reason that this issue was never discussed at that meeting last month was because this item's cosponsor, council member Joyce, apparently pulled his support at the last minute. Although I was born in District 1, I don't now live there, but I would think, Mr. Joyce, you would have responded to my three different requests about why you changed your mind. I think that would have spoken volumes. Why did you pull your support for Mr. Weiss's Baldurama Gym proposal? Mr. Joyce could not be bothered to get back to me. Hopefully sometime you can. This all has a disturbing aroma, and I hope that the two of you can explain one time to us why you introduced it and why you changed your mind about building a gym at Baldurama Park. Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Jacobs.
Hi, mayor and council members. Thank you for having me here today. I live in Carlsbad, but I'm here to say something very serious about something in the area that I wanted to bring to your attention. I can tell you that my partner Bob and I do live only a few miles from here, and we do spend a lot of money in your lovely restaurants that you've done such a good job of bringing here. This is a serious issue that I think has slipped a lot of people's mind. Recently, the flavored tobacco ban went into effect, and it came at a cost where I'm sure it was well-intended by the state, and then subsequently, the referendum was upheld by the people. And a lot of the retailers here have taken it off of their shelves, but the unintended consequence is that now you have vaping that is contraband, that is on the shelves of other retailers. And we had just recently, I don't know if you know about this, but some children were killed in an illegal vaping sale. And one of the children that made the killing was arrested right here in Oceanside, and the other one right here in Vista. And what I'm really concerned about is that this bill was passed with no funding to you or any of the other cities for enforcement. I consider it an unfunded mandate. There's a half a billion dollars in the Tobacco Fund, and I'd like to ask that you ask the state and work with the other cities and maybe ask for a resolution from Sandag. I don't expect our police officers in any of our communities to be taxed anymore for this, or for the cities to have any burden put on them, but you haven't been given any direction on how to enforce this. This is going to become a serious issue really quickly. Vaping with fentanyl is happening all over this country. It is serious, and it is going to affect our children very, very quickly, especially with the border right here. So I'm really encouraging you. I'd be happy to help coordinate if there's any way possible for me to help.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Shelley Parker?
Yes, good evening, mayor, city council, members, staff. I live in Rancho San Luis Rey, you know that, but I'm here tonight, I didn't wear blue. I attended the meeting that.
Your hair is.
Yeah, well, yes, blue-green. I attended the meeting, the in-person meeting about the Eddie Jones Warehouse, and I use the 76. I'm not looking forward to the impact of more trucks on there, but what I really, I stood up and said it at the meeting and listened to what the people who, who listened to the developer said, two things, that this developer is just checking boxes. He is not actually listening to the people who are making real suggestions and have real concerns about the impact. Now, I heard that there was only a 1% increase in traffic. I can't believe that. And what I see happening in Oceanside, I've only lived here for seven years, but every time I turn around, there's a project and there's a traffic impact. And so I'm hoping that the planning department is really looking at. And so I'm hoping that the planning department is really looking, and we have an outside source of how much traffic impact. On Mission Boulevard in the hacienda that hasn't even opened, that, the way that the island has been made has backed up traffic already, and it, and that facility isn't even open, and there's no new traffic that's been added, but it was designed incorrectly. So I'm just here to support people in a community that I don't live in, but I'm asking you to take a bigger look. I know the general plan is being looked at. I'm really glad it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez? Ms. Martinez?
Oh, hi. I'm Sandra Martinez. Can you do the magic thing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyways, that's off of your website, and it's a link to the San Diego County COVID And it's telling us, you know, these are what are allowed by local, I don't even know what to call them, agencies anymore, but I do want to go over what's listed there. First of all, you know, no effect, no actual early treatments were allowed, and the studies are very conclusive now. Eighty-five percent of the COVID deaths would have been alleviated with early treatment, with proper early treatment. So in San Diego alone, we would have had 860 deaths instead of 5,700. So that's really a sad situation that we allowed that to happen when we actually had options. So Paxlovit is the first thing that's listed there, and it is a black, has a black box warning, which means it's the most serious type of warning by the FDA and can lead to death or permanent disability when we had options that did not do that. The second thing is Molepovir, which is mutagenic, meaning it causes cancer. And according to medical journals, it is, they call it coding for catastrophe. Studies demonstrate that it is lethally mutagenic. And then the third item was Remdesivir, which is Gilead Sciences product, which of course is a local company, so it's really nice to support them. But unfortunately, it actually killed more people than Ebola did in its Ebola trials. It creates 75% liver damage and 20, sorry, 25% and 25% kidney damage, multi-system inflammatory diseases, et cetera. So we should really get these things off your website.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Mr. McCoy, how are you?
I'm good. Mayor Sanchez and the council, nice to be here tonight. I'm with John McCoy with the Oceanside Theater Company. We are the resident company at the Brooks Theater just down the street here. And I'd like to invite everyone, please, come and see, and hopefully I'll get this right. There it is.
Lucky Stiff.
Stiff. Lucky Stiff opens, actually preview on March 3, and opening night is March 4. So all of you, please join us for our reception, opening night's reception on March 4. This is a wonderful musical comedy, kind of a farce, really, really be uplifting, fun, great entertainment. And I'd like to take this moment to thank the city of Oceanside, the staff, everyone. We are enjoying, and I will say enjoying, and using a 20-year lease on the facility, and we're moving it forward. If all goes well, we will have renovation happening by the end of 2023, which means new bathrooms. That's only one thing, but we need, we need the bathroom. And really, really going forward, the activities there, if you walk by the marquee or drive by the marquee, it changes almost weekly. We have all kinds of things happening, from concerts. We just finished the, in conjunction with the Historical Society, Black Pioneers Show, which was wonderfully attended, sold out as a matter of fact. We have music concerts coming up, and of course, good old Lucky Stiff coming up. So please, and by the way, I should mention, the Oceanside International Film Festival is opening on February 21, another wonderful thing here in Oceanside. There are lots of cultural, lots of great activities. The Brooks Theater, right in the middle of the cultural district, which I don't know if you know the Oceanside, and I will go and exit stage left, but thank you very much. Please come and see it.
Thank you, John. Is Patricia Brown here? Timmy Knott, Mr. Knott? Is Molly Walters here?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to ask the city council tonight to adjourn in memory of Raquel Tejeda. Raquel Tejeda, in 1956, got her start in acting and also public here in the Oceanside Amphitheater. For those of you who do not know who Raquel Tejeda is, her name is commonly known as Raquel Welch. She passed away today, and I think that, in fact, there's one little unknown fact is, is that her, Whoopi Goldberg, and myself had held the same job at San Diego State University at the closed-circuit TV position down there. And this is one of the few things that I have in common with her. And sort of funny is, is that it's something that goes from generation to generation. And so I thought it would be very appropriate, since she did get her start here in the Miss Southern California contest, and that's her at the very end on the right-hand side there. She came in second, and then she went on to the Ferris of the Fair down at Del Mar and became the winner there. So if we can at least adjourn in her memory, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Molly, and I am part of the community outreach team for the Eddie Jones Project, representing the applicant RPG development. I'm a little bit nervous. We agree that community engagement is an important part of the process. I have been taking notes on all of the comments you have shared this evening, and will be sure to share them with our design team. We are putting the finishing touches on the community website that will launch tomorrow. We will be sending a link to our email list, so if you are not on our email list yet, please email outreach@eddyjonesproject.com. That is Eddie with an I-E. And we will be sure to add you to our list. We are committed to continuing to meet with residents that would like to learn more and are planning more public meetings as the project progresses through the SEQA and city review processes. The project still has a long way to go, including the public circulation of the draft EIR this spring. We look forward to continuing working with the staff and the community to identify opportunities to refine the project where we can while remaining consistent with the project site existing zoning and aligning with the city policies pertaining to the preservation of industrial lands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So that is the end of the items not on the agenda.
Correct.
So thank you very much, y'all, for coming. We are now at, at the end of the meeting. General council member comments.
We'd still like to have some speakers who were not listed there, just as you did before.
I'm sorry? You, I, I thought I've seen you, I thought I was seeing you here. You've been here for a bit, right?
Yeah, I've been here. But I'm not, I wasn't, I didn't come in early enough. I only got notice of this yesterday and didn't come in early enough.
Why don't you go ahead and speak for two minutes? Please state your name and speak for two minutes.
Okay. My name is Ron Stefan, and a way of background, I was the top producer for Grubman Ellis nationally, after three years with the company, which is a commercial real estate company. I went on to real estate financing, worked for George Smith Partners, which last year did $3 billion plus in financing. So I'm pretty familiar with warehouses, with real estate and nationally and in the area here. The defined, the project is 560,000 square feet, which the current zoning limits to 50,000 square feet. So for one building, it's 10 times, more than 10 times the size that's permitted by the local zoning law. It has 114 or whatever quantity, maybe 160 truck slots, which is triple what is allowed under the current zoning. Each, each building under the current zoning is allowed six spots per, per truck. One of the things I think that's important to realize is that we all see trucks parked by the side of the road, and what you're going to find is trucks are going to be parked by the side of road, Benet Road, and in the, along the 76 as they wait to get into the warehouse, or as they are tired, want to sleep there for a while. Additionally, I expect that there will be traffic that will come up into the neighborhood by accident, and where's a semi truck going to turn around when it gets up into the Wantas US States? One other major point is that I believe that the impact of this warehouse will be to lower the property taxes collected by the city of Oceanside because the resale values in Wantas US States will decline. The cost of building a large warehouse is not very expensive on a per-square-foot basis. Therefore, the, the property taxes that will be collected, it will not be significant. That's the end of my time, but not the end of my talk.
Thank you very much. All right. I do believe now we are at the end of the public comments, not, not agendized. All right. So general council member comments. Councilmember Robinson.
There you go. Lost my pencil. Make it work. Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of quick things. I just wanted to report that on February 2nd and 3rd, I was in LA for the League of California Cities New Council Member Academy, and it was a couple of days of very insightful information. But the good news is, is that the briefings we get from our city clerk and our city attorney line up perfectly, so we're, we're right in touch with what's going on. And then on the 13th, I went to the San Diego Imperial County Division Meeting for League of California Cities. And the reason I just want to bring it up is that, because there's talk about local control, and that's really what the league is focused on, is trying to get back local control to, to our, our cities, and that's what we need. Yesterday, I want to give a big shout out to Nichols Elementary School, the principal there, for their, Principal Flaherty, for, and the students at the school, they invited us to, it's what they called a, their second-grade barnyard musical, musical. And it was one of the best things I've been at at a local elementary school in a long time, and that's even, don't tell my kids, but even the ones they were in. And then Councilmember Joyce also kind of hit this earlier with our high school students on all the emails we receive. We do get them, look at them, read them, don't always get a chance to respond back to them, but the ones from our high school students were really insightful, and I'm also, like he said, glad to see our local high school, school students engaging in the political process. I think it's good. Thank you. That's it.
I was just going to add, I think you, you were hanging out with the, one of the nominees for Administrator of the Year. I think Principal Flaherty is up for that nominee this, this very year, so, very cool.
Right. So a couple announcements. I've been honored with being appointed to the San Diego County Airport Authority. A lot of opportunities for, I believe it's the first time that Oceanside has a representative on the airport authority, basically in terms of tourism and transportation. I've also been appointed to Sandag Transportation Committee, and that's also a big honor. I don't think we've ever had an Oceanside rep on the transportation committee. And, and on February 25, is it? O- Oceanside, American Little League is having their opening day, and not only that, they're going to be celebrating their 70, 70th anniversary. Yeah, it's 25th, sorry. So that's really, really exciting. They're going to be having great activities on that day. And, well, Raquel Welch was not actually an Oceanside resident, but she did apparently have an impact in Oceanside, and she had an impact probably on a lot of, a lot of folks. So yes, let's go ahead, rise, and adjourn. Thank you. The next council meeting is Wednesday, March 8, 3:30. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.